I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seaver.
Here.
Vice Chair Spall.
Present.
Mrs. Stevens.
Present.
Mrs. Brezja.
Present.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Mile.
Present.
Dr. Jones. Madam Chair, we have.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board and city Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezja, that the school board, city Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five. Okay, announcements, we have a few announcements. Dr. Newman, do you have any announcements? No? We do need to set the January date for the mini-retreat. Alba, you have heard from all but one. Is there a compliment?
It looks like January 12th would probably be the best day.
Okay, we'll do January 12th, and what time did we want to do? How long do you guys think we're gonna need this?
This is.
Oh, we're still gonna meet on the 5th also?
Yeah.
Or just instead of?
Alright, so, January 12th at, are you working that day, Dana?
Um, yes. So, I'm not sure, like, I might not be able to be there, so I have to. I thought, yeah, I thought that January 5th was when we were doing that.
That's the organizational meeting?
Right. So, it's, okay. I know we did it, like, in the past, we did it on the day that we were off.
Oh, we, okay.
I prefer that.
You're waiting to hear from two.
I think it's me.
Miles and Brown.
Yeah, and I know both of us work on that day, so.
Or we could do 5:00 P.M.?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might work.
Yeah. I mean, I could probably do earlier than that, if you wanted to do like a 4.
It's gonna be a longer, they're usually.
Probably 4 would be better, if everybody, I can do 4.
Can you do 4?
I can do 4.
I mean, I think Diana is the one who's the, where that's a 5:00 P.M. start.
Right.
That's true.
But for her, I think she said Tuesdays and Thursdays were the toughest.
Yeah, I'm.
But it's Monday.
Is it possible to do a Wednesday, or is that?
Well, these are the dates right here, the people that have responded.
Okay.
So, we can only pick.
14th, would the 14th work?
I have for some reason, I say the 14th isn't available to me, and I don't remember why.
So, I think it's only fair that we pick one of the ones that have 5 in it. So, it's the 12th, or any other date that had 5. So, it's gonna have to be the 12th. But Dana, you pick the time.
Yeah, we'll just do it 4, I'll just figure it out, it gives me time to figure it out.
What time does your school dismiss?
Oh, it's at 3:30, but my daughter goes to DC every other, every Monday, so that's where I'm thinking. Yeah.
So, okay, so it would be.
The 12th at 4:00 P.M.?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing on is, we all received an email from the Osborne Counseling Department requesting two members for advisory. I have heard from two members. Is, or it's Mrs. Spall and myself.
Well, I would like to do if I could.
Can you be there at 9:00 in the morning?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Why did I think it was at 9?
That's why I didn't say that.
You know what, I was looking at it, and I was thinking it was in the evening, never mind, I hate it when that happens.
We've both had kids, have gone, three kids that have gone through the counseling department, we're familiar with.
Right, right.
Some of the programming and things like that, so I think it makes sense. Um, I just wanted to make sure they're. Okay. Alright, I will let Mr. Kaiser know. She's on Seaver.
You know, I didn't, I.
What did I promise?
I don't remember.
October some, December or something, it's a Tuesday in December.
It's okay, but I thought it was.
I don't know why I looked at that, and I thought it was in the evening, I'm not sure why, I don't know.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, we did have a call regarding our calendar, and that we were discriminating against Christians, because we didn't have Christmas and Christmas Eve on the.
Specified on it?
On the calendar. Is this something we want to bring forward to anything, or I just want to be able to call this gentleman back and say, want a break, because it's.
I mean, in relation to that, like, we do do, we put Ramadan on there, we put, you know, Rosh Hashanah. I feel like he has a point, but it depends on what you guys think as a whole. It is a, I mean, because we do have the Jewish and the Muslim.
Yes, Mrs. Spall.
I would support, um, everything on the calendar, just being a student day off, or.
Well, it's a teacher day off, too.
Whatever, student day off, student and staff day off.
School holiday.
I don't wanna call it a holiday, if we're, that's the thing, I don't think we should call it a holiday at all.
Is it like division closed?
Yeah. Division closed, or student day off.
I don't think it matters what we do, somebody's not gonna be happy with whatever it is.
I agree, but there is an imbalance.
I really am also trying to be inclusive, I mean, like, I mean, great, I agree.
And 90%.
Communication Department puts out information, we say we celebrate Ramadan, those who celebrate Ramadan, or you say things like that?
I think we just say closed, I think Metis put something out about celebrating those who aren't, but I think we usually just say the division is closed, or whatever.
I mean, do we not wish people a Merry Christmas, though, I mean?
No, we say happy holidays on our Christmas.
Okay.
I think for the holidays, we say happy holidays, we say happy holidays, we have a safe break or something.
Do we ever mention Happy Hanukkah, though, on the day of Hanukkah? Oh, okay, I didn't know, because I know Prince William does, I wasn't sure if we did that.
Alright.
Whatever we do, it should be veritable.
Yeah.
You know, because right now, if we are saying, you know, closed in observance of Diwali, then on the 24th and the 25th, we are closed in observance of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. We're closed to the 20th and the 21st, 22nd, because that's winter break, or, you know what I mean, like, winter break is around, is around it, but it's closed in observance of New Year's Day, closed in observance of New Year's Eve, like, it's, I don't have a problem adding that, if that's what we do for the other one-off holidays for other faith traditions.
I mean, there are American holidays, 90% of Americans celebrate these holidays, even if they're not religiously based, you know what I mean? In America, that's just.
Well, I mean, on the actual calendar, we just have winter break, it encompasses a large period of time.
Right.
Should we just put at the bottom, by the way, Christmas?
No, just say, I mean, when you see it on a calendar, it's like written at the top or at the bottom. I mean, if it's, if we're, if we're recognizing other faith-based holidays, then I don't see how it wouldn't be a good thing.
I don't think we should mix it all.
I agree with Jill.
But we can take a vote.
I'm looking at our.
I feel like if we do it, like you said, all or nothing, yeah.
And then people are, can celebrate however they want, you know, I'm guilty of it, I think on some days I do celebrate a day on my Facebook page, and, and it's probably, if it's not for everyone, you know, probably it should be avoided, but.
Yeah, I mean, we do have on here, Rosh Hashanah, you don't prefer.
Yeah, we need, so we should just say.
Mrs. Brezja?
You can send it to the, it's the academic committee that does the calendar, right? Send it to them.
Just send it.
Not it.
That's fine, I mean, because it has to vote on the calendar anyway, right?
Well, at least we're not stopping it, it's not a full stop.
Right, no, send it to them, and if it's worth amending prior to winter break this year, out of, you know, maybe the decision out of that committee will be, it's not worth doing for this calendar cycle, but we'll do it next time, right?
Alright. That was my last announcement, so now we get to go into a work session, agenda, a little bit different this time, because we have some solid things to, not proposed business, it's regular business. And do we have anybody calling in? Oh, okay. Alright, Mrs. Stevens?
Yes. Um, if you can pull up the legislative priorities. So, Dr. Newman, did any of your cabinet members add to this yet? Did they?
We just made it.
I can tell you what was updated from school board input. Um, so on the legislative priorities, based on the feedback that I got, of course, 2026 was updated, because it did say 2025. Then if we scroll down to culture of caring. And then in culture of caring, if we look at the first bullet point, it says, support additional state funding to increase resources devoted to serving the mental and physical health and wellness needs of students and staff. We added the and staff portion, so that we're working with everybody. Then additionally under that, if we go to the second bullet point, the end of it, which says, allow for equitable access to educational opportunities for all students, that was an addition. And then if we go further down to quality workforce, the last bullet point, support funding to provide enhanced opportunities for family and community engagement, that is a new bullet point. And then if.
Sorry.
Under strong family.
Sorry, under strong family and community partnership.
Okay.
Sorry, I've looked at this a bunch of times, so for my brain, it's like, let's quick go through this. Um, and then under aligned foundational supports, we have provide strong and equitable funding to counteract losses due to cuts to federal programs. And those were the additions, the only things that were changed, other than the additions, was of course, updating the school board members, updating the year, so if you go all the way down to the second page, you'll see everyone's names are on there, um, in alphabetical order after Vice Chair Spall. So, those were the updates that were based on the feedback from, um, the graphic organizer.
We did have just, under student academic success, the first bullet added and time after resources to support legislation that provides school divisions with resources and time to achieve success.
Yeah.
And then under culture of caring, we just changed breakfast and lunch to meat, to free meal programs, to be inclusive, so, yep.
Right, and I don't know if there was a question on dinner, dinner is supported through a grant.
So, that's what, we just took it, we took the labeling of the meals off and just put.
Yeah, that's what I thought, and make it broader, yeah. Some people might point out that it's not really free.
Some people have.
But for the families, it's, yeah.
Is it extra taxpayer money, or is it just taxpayer money that's allocated to schools?
Yeah, it's just.
And we just, so it's not, so technically, right, I mean, but that's on the schools.
It's from your, it's from your federal taxes that everybody pays, but it's out of the federal. So, no local.
But what I'm asking is, is it extra in addition to what is already being taken out of our fun, funding, you know, for schools? Because that's the question, because we can allocate the money where we think it's best.
Right.
Is this extra money that I, the taxpayer is paying for these free meals?
So, what it is, it's, there's not an additional fee charged to taxpayers, and I think Dr. Newman can probably explain it better than I can, but it's through CIP, and we pay, CEP, sorry, and, because I was thinking CIP for something different. CEP, and then we're reimbursed for it, and then dinners are paid for through a grant.
Because that's important to under, to like notice, that it's not extra.
Right, right, there's no extra additional tax. It's out of the regular.
We are not allowed actually to take money out or in of that food fund, it has to sustain itself.
Yes, yes.
So, that's, it's all, it's in its own little container.
Yeah.
And a lot of times people, you don't understand that, but it's in its own little piggyback.
Right.
Okay, and so.
Good.
Yes, Mrs. Spall?
Sorry, um, just bringing home a couple things that came up in the, um, I've been assigned to go to committee of the whole meetings, and so, there was a question, um, on the city side, if the terminology percentage of English learners, or should it be?
What page are you on?
Under inclusive and collaborative learning environment.
Okay.
Um, bullet one, percentages of English learners, should it be ELL, English language learners?
Oh, we call them, well.
We call them ELs, English learners.
They changed that sentence, English learners.
And I'm not sure, they changed theirs, but there was a question about that. Um, I know that they're gonna push hard for alt-ed, so under culture of caring, um, we do mention alternative and non-traditional education problems, I mean, does anyone program?
That's why we're trying to avoid it. Students need to allow for equitable access.
Um, does anyone want to push harder specifically for our alt-ed? You know, I mean, do you think any?
Get more funding.
So, this is like, so, you're talking about committee of the whole with city council.
Yep.
This is really focused not just to city council, but to our legislators in Richmond.
So, understood, but Danica was gonna carry it forward, I mean, she did try, they recognize that she tried, they recognize that, you know, it's probably gonna work, and that it's gonna need funding. They're gonna put it forward, I think, as its own bullet.
Okay.
Um, for funding at the state, this is speaking directly to their legislative priorities.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm just asking if people want.
That's more specific to our program.
Yep.
I like it how it is. I mean, it says what we need to say.
Yeah, and this was.
We were, we were, what we did last time was specific, we needed to pass a resolution, it was like a whole thing, like, that ship has sailed. We found alternative ways to fund the pilot without Richmond's assistance, and now, if the pilot continues, it's an operating question, right, it's an operating budget question.
It's a totally different question.
So, I think we're, so I think any kind of, I think that ship is. Or anything more.
I'm just trying to keep one hand washing the other.
Did we, did we want to, oh, I was gonna ask, I know this is like, and I thought to just even talk about, but are we not gonna put anything about collective bargaining that we want them to be on one side or the other, on that, for legislative priorities?
We haven't put collective bargaining on for a number of years, I can't remember how many we last had it, I think back when Tim DiMario was on the board. Um, and I'm not even sure how many years ago that was, but we've already put out our stance on it with the resolution that was passed. Um, so I don't know that.
Right, I didn't know if it comes up, do we want them to fight for one way or the other, funding, or, that's why I mentioned that, yeah. Since it's something that we're giving as legislative priorities, and I know that is.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the will of the board, whether to add it as a legislative priority or not, it didn't, when I got the graphic organizers, it wasn't listed on them.
Right.
So, I went, what I did was based on what was on those graphic organizers, so that's what we've got, um, yes.
I mean, I can tell you that VSBA and I believe VAS as well is, has in their platform that they want to maintain local control over collective bargaining, because that's one of the elements of the new bill that we previously discussed, that the control over whether to, whether or not to do it, and what you're bargaining over is gonna, that power's gonna transfer to five random people in Richmond if the new legislation goes through, so VSBA and VAS, because it's kind of a very, that's part of the reason I did not offer it on the graphic organizers, it's a very big question about what you, is it maintain local control?
Is it, yeah.
To seek the funding, is it to do this and then do that?
It's not a simple one-liner, it's, it's, there's lots of factors there.
We would have to put out a whole separate.
Addition to that, okay.
It is, there's many, you know, the way they break up the bargaining units, I don't like the way they break up the bargaining units, and then a lot, like, there's uh, new draft law.
Thank you. Okay, I was just wondering, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, like, um, Ms. Brezja said, there's a lot of different factors and components that you support it, you know, would we put out, do we support it a full, do we not support it, what aspects of either way, so it would need its own.
Right, that's fine, I just wondered, you know.
Okay. So, um, the timing on this, as usual, it's kind of coming very quick. We need to have this final and voted on before our joint meeting with city council on October 30th.
Right.
So, we only have one meeting before then, and that's the 28th, so we do need this to, it'll be under discussion, but then we will likely need to waive segregation and approve it.
And there aren't any, for lack of a better term, earth-shattering changes on it, it's very similar to what it was before, and I know that Dr. Newman's cabinet, other than those few tweaks in wording, left it very similar, and we also try to have ours, I think Dr. Newman has said it before, have our legislative priorities a little bit similar to our surrounding school divisions, because they're more likely to be supported, whereas if ours are very different than like Prince William County, Manassas Park, you know, it becomes, we all want to be aligned, so we have a greater chance of these things going through, but also because we support a lot of the same things, so.
Okay, that was the only question I had.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we're all good on legislative priorities for now. Alright, our next item is the joint meeting preparation, and, um, Dr. Newman got a list from, uh, Mr. Burke. Do you want me to read it off, or do you want to read it off? Okay.
So, uh, they want an alt-ed update, an 8700 purchase update, a new dean update, the Manassas Industrial School cottage slash current dean update, they're gonna provide that. Mr. Arseni, Sari will.
Arseri.
Arseri will give that one. Uh, OHS connector update, and then last one, graduation anticipation. They, they want to have discussion about council members also walking and sitting. So, that's the list.
Okay, do we have any information from Dr. Chapman about if that is possible, or could we?
I, I will.
Okay, or we could say, we need to check at the, it's not our, not our decision, really. I mean, we can make. Alright, and then, Mrs. Spall, did you have something from educational support that you wanted to add to that joint meeting?
Isn't that here, oh, sorry, yes, I do. Um, staff was going to bring tonight, uh, something that came out of educational support, which was some level of ROI, is that right, is that what this document is?
We want to be, have the correct terminology.
Well, so, are we just, because our, we're. Because ROI has some specific meanings, at that, at the educational support committee meeting, there were discussions about providing updates on how the investments the city has made in, in the schools, the impact of those, right? And so, but listening to what you just said in terms of the topics, four of those are included in this discussion, and so, it could align, and if you wanted to add, so what's on the slides isn't all that would be said, right, more could be said for, um, the rest of it. So, this was an attempt to kind of address the original request, and then, as Dr. Newman was saying, it's like several of the things we revamped, we changed it slightly today to perhaps capture that, so Alba, if you want to go to the next, you want me to just go through it?
Please, yep.
Um, so, um, our point here is that, because we were trying to, um, continue that relationship with the city in advance of budget time, right, to say, okay, we recognize what the city has done, and here's what we've done with these monies, and here's some impact, so, we're just saying, right, they, we've gotten some additional targeted revenue in the past few years, um, and then we, um, got the bond to allow us to build Jenny Dean, the new Jenny Dean, and then tonight, we're just gonna talk about how we've used those funds, as well as what we're seeing in terms of to date, and what we anticipate. So, on each slide, you'll see, um, discussion of the infusion of money, as well as potential, occurring or potential impact, so you can go ahead, Alba. So, first, for Jenny Dean, right, we've got, um, uh, that they approved this, the bond series, right, which allowed, um, which provides $50 million for us to build the new Jenny Dean school, and to date, Mrs. Spall, the project remains on time and within budget, as you know from all of your updates, um, and then, um, and when asked, Mr. Gifeller could provide them with more details about any of it, if they have questions. The impact clearly, right, this is allowing us to build a state-of-the-art elementary school that's gonna open in August 2026. So, this one's a very tangible impact of this infusion of money, that we would not have been able to build the school without that, right? So, and the city, we needed the city to do it, so, okay.
Great, okay, go to the next one.
Okay, so, we, we put, we tried to group these things in categories, so this one is not on their list of topics, but it's an important one, and this just highlights, over the past three fiscal years, the additional funding that they've given us to support compensation increases, right? In FY24, in the middle of the year, they gave us extra money to support the additional pay increase for teachers, and then that continued into FY25, which allowed to continue, to continue those pay increases, as well as allowed, supported us, um, in our ability to do a 6% increase for eligible employees, and targeted, remember in FY25, we did some targeted adjustments in salary scales to try and have those scales be more competitive. And then in FY26, they provided us an additional $1.5 million again, um, which allowed us to move from, um, 5.5% to 6.7% salary increase. And so, clearly, the impact, as you saw in your meeting in September, we have some tangible information, right, that, um, we had an increase in teacher retention, um, can't draw a causal relationship, but there is an increase in retention from '24 to '25, so, um.
You don't have to add that part.
I'm just saying it to you. But we could say, look, we have more salaries, so they, the impact is retention rate, so that's exciting, because that's a tangible thing. Um, and that's just of teachers, right, so, okay, go ahead, Alba. And then the next one is about the purchase of 8700, right, the city approved us using fund balance to purchase the building. That's happening rapidly, the closing's gonna occur in November, tentatively scheduled for the 18th. Impact, right, it gives us a location for the alt-ed program, which will be on the next slide. There's no cost for us moving to a new location, and we won't have to continue paying rent to lease space in this building, so, those are all big impacts for us. Yes, ma'am?
Don't we also have the impact of revenue from our existing tenants?
We, we do, um, we do, we'll have some revenue from existing tenants, which will allow us to, like, pay to maintain the building, basically, so we could add that as a bullet, if that's something that you all want, so, um.
It's probably good to add, yeah.
Alright, that's making that note, okay.
Okay. I was just gonna say, November 18th, is that our first day of VSBA, or the day before VSBA?
The day before.
Day before, okay.
Yeah.
We have a meeting on the 18th.
No, we don't.
We don't.
No.
We do that.
No meeting on the 18th.
Trust me.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, well, something was so.
We only have one meeting in November.
Right.
And it's what?
It's the Wednesday after election day.
Yes, yeah.
It's a weird day.
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
Well, anyway, we were gonna, we go down on the 18th at night.
Okay.
There's no school board meeting? Elite.
Okay, so you can, everybody good for that, we can add, we can add about the rental income, okay, next page. Okay, so, um, this top, there are the topic, right, so the city approved us to use money from the fund balance to launch our alternative education pilot program, we started with a program administrator in July 2025, you all had the update last week.
Yep.
Construction is currently underway to convert the space into an instructional one, and that's due to be completed by December 1st, which is exciting. Program will open for students in January, and hiring is underway for the teaching and support positions. And then again, to continue the, what's the impact, right, it's an alternative option for our students, it allows individual support and keeps them on track academically and towards graduation, that's a very high-level impact, but, yes, Mrs. Stevens.
So, for independence, we have to pay for spaces, will this reduce the number of spaces we have to pay for, or will it provide additional?
Additional.
Okay.
Because it gives us additional capacity.
Mr. Gifeller was nodding up and down behind you, you were nodding back and forth, and.
That's a good question.
We're still gonna use independence.
Right, right, I'm not saying we're not, but the question was just, you know, would we, do we need the same number of slots, because we pay for each one? So, and Dr. Gifeller asked, is there any slots, and there's no slots?
I don't want to keep the same number of slots, because we think about it in a tiered.
Yeah, makes sense.
The other thing is, could we add that, though, how many slots open, you know, this open for us? Like, additional slots open?
Yeah.
You know, because that would be great information for them to kind of like quantify it, you know, like, this is why we did this, because of this, instead of just having that sentence on the end.
It's kind of fluid, though.
It is fluid, but at the same time.
We can quantify how many spots we can open up, and that's 40 to 60, but I don't.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean.
Can't quantify.
Yeah.
Yeah, just how many we can open up.
Open up for.
It gives us the.
At our center, I mean.
Right, at our center.
We can take from the by-the-numbers part of the presentation from last week and add something on here.
That's what, yeah, because that would be good for city council to see that, yeah.
I've got those slides from last week.
Okay.
Alright, and then the last piece is, um, we had had it as additional capital improvement updates, but it could be just relabeled as Osborne Connector, because that's what it is, these are photos, um, from your presentation for next week. Um, so, it, the construction's underway, substantial completion by November 10th, so as you can see, like, and as they can see, right, there's several things that are all happening very quickly, right, so the purchase of this building, the construction for the alt-ed program, the launch of the alt-ed program, and the Osborne Connector are all happening in the next few months.
This is true.
And the impact, right, it's enhanced safety and security and then there's additional usable space. So it is connecting everything. So those were the updates we had in terms of infusions of, and this was not an additional infusion of money other than they approved us using fund balance before for the Osborne Connector that was approved earlier as part of our C I P.
I, I like using our logo for pathways, but do you think that the next school board meeting, you could show us some pictures of what, what it's looking like in there? For the Alt Ed?
For Alt Ed.
Or, I mean, maybe like in our November or December work session, you can get a tour?
That too. I mean, December one.
Whatever works.
It'd be nice to have those pictures as a slide for city councils.
I hate to take away from the work of the, I mean, you know, well, let's stole it out and smile and it, you know, maybe we see it and then if we do like a ribbon cutting or something, then other people can see like all of finish, I don't know. But Dana and I had pointed out, I'm sure we have, we are allowed to stop on the third floor. It's not like we're not allowed to do that, but.
It's going to be done.
Haven't been out to see it yet. Have you seen it?
You don't have to say out to see, you say down to see.
Yeah, over.
Because it's right below us.
It's close.
You don't have to go out anywhere.
Anyway, just something exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Kaspata.
I think the city council will like that.
I do too.
It shows where their funds went.
Yeah, and I like the photographs of the, of the updates on the connector because the visual is very helpful, so maybe the visual of Alt Ed would be nice as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good on the joint meeting agenda.
I think it's good.
Yeah, okay. All right, with that, we have somebody on the line that would like to join the meeting. So can I, what?
Wait a minute, sorry, do you want to add to this about the graduation rate request? Or are you just going to verbally say, are you giving this talk?
Most likely with support based on questions. I'm listening to Mr. Giffeller. Was it graduation rate, Dr. Newman, or it was just about the ending?
Graduation participation.
Yes.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, that's just a discussion. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
We don't have to.
Proceed. Okay.
Let me make a motion. Please.
All right.
Chair, I'm with the school board, approve Ms. Diana Brown to participate in the meeting remotely. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Miles, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve Ms. Diana Brown to participate in the meeting remotely. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero, and. Alba, do we need to get any other information from Ms. Brown? Location?
You can.
Hello, Ms. Brown, thank you for joining us. We've been through the first two items on the agenda and we just need to know where you're calling in from.
What?
I'm in New Orleans.
New Orleans.
Nice.
Louisiana.
One of my favorite cities.
Never been there.
So sorry, it's fourth thirty-three over here.
Oh, yeah, it's an hour earlier. All right, we're moving on to our next topic, which is our school board professional development. And I will go to Ms. Diana Brown to lead us in a discussion on this.
I'm right up. Thank you, team, thank you so much for your flexibility today. I don't know how I lost that one hour because I had it on my calendar. But so we had agreed to read The Speed of Trust and there was an assignment for this week and I, I prepared a PowerPoint that hopefully all of you have seen. And so basically, we're going to read chapters and then we're just going to simplify it to make, just to, to give us one word of impact or one phrase. So if you guys are okay with it, I can go with my phrase.
And can you give the page number when, before when you say it?
Yes, and by the way, I cannot see any of you, but hopefully you all can see me.
At the moment, we're looking at the presentation now, so. Go ahead.
Perfect, so I will be on page five under getting a handle on trust. And my phrase is on the second paragraph, it indicates that simply put, trust means confidence. And then if you keep reading the opposite of trust, it's not just distrust, but it's suspicion. So I think that's pretty impactful. So that's it, so if somebody else can go in.
Who would like to go next?
Their, their phrase or their word or their sentence.
Mrs. Spall? What's your page number?
Mine's page twenty-six. I didn't bring my book with me, but I have Not Trusting People is a Greater Risk. And I can't quote exactly from the book what that meant, but you know, it's kind of not trusting people is the opposite of assuming best intentions.
And I can go next.
Okay.
So what I saw was kind of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and it talked about stewardship as a job with a trust. And I, I like how it makes you think about relationships you have in the workplace with the different levels at, like here with the different levels between Dr. Newman, his cabinet, the board, building staff, that we have to have a relationship with trust. We have to have a stewardship relationship and assume that others are doing things with good intent. And so that one I liked a lot.
That was on twenty-nine?
It was like, it's kind of started on twenty-seven because, and I think this is chapter two.
I would say it's chapter two.
I know, I know.
Not everybody.
I know, I know, and, and I also had one for chapter one, which was just the myths versus reality. I thought that was really interesting. But yeah, I mean, because he talks about on twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine about how his first job was like at home, taking care of the yard. And it was a stewardship of trust. And so I was sitting in a doctor's office, I didn't have anything else to do, so I read.
So we want to do next or should I go?
I can do it, okay.
Miss Miles?
Page twenty-one. It stood out to me when he said he had talked to a consultant, Robert Chong, that above all, success in business requires two things, winning competitive strategy, a superb organizational execution. Distrust is the enemy of both. And I just thought that spoke volumes, that you can have strategy, you can be organized, but if both sides don't trust each other, it's an enemy of both, so.
Ms. Breja?
I can go. Mine was page ten, which was just the phrase, we have a crisis of trust on our hands. That was mine.
What page?
Ten.
Do you believe that? Do you think we do?
I think we have heard.
All right, and mine is, and again, I wasn't sure on the chapter one thing because they weren't really numbered.
And I was, I was like, yeah.
But mine's on page twenty-nine and thirty, trust is a function of two things, character and competence. And I'll read one part that stood out.
Very competent.
All right.
Okay, I see it.
Yeah. Competence and.
So that's basically the format that we can follow if you guys like it. And of course, depending on the work session and if we want to go even deeper and have discussions of this quotes or words or phrases, we can allot time for that the next round, if you guys like this. And underneath each of those slides that have a page to write the notes, there's a summary of the chapters, so you can go through the different ones. So that's it, that's as simple as it can be.
I have a question about page numbers, like what, can we say where we're going to stop, where we're going to start so that we?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Because I was confused and so I started reading extra because I was like, this is a big book, I need to read it faster.
No, it's not numbered though.
The chapters aren't numbered, but the pages are.
Because it says, yeah, because it's separated, like the one thing that changes everything seems like it's like a, is that a chapter?
Forward.
Right. And then.
I think the, the slides are divided that way. The, the first chapter is the, the one thing that changes everything. And then the second chapter is the first wave.
Okay.
And that would be your second assignment.
That's, that's.
And I think that's a little bit longer, it goes to page one twelve, but there's summaries. So don't feel obligated if you don't have the time, I know you're busy. But self-trust is kind of like a self-study for yourself as you relate to the whole board. So it's one of the most important chapters, but it is also kind of like one that you can take personally, study deeper on your own.
The only thing I, because I, I, I see that, but the first wave, that's like almost fifty pages. So that's why I'm wondering if we can pair that up into three or two, like split it up.
Have a longer time.
Okay, or a longer time, that's fine, because it's, it's actually more than fifty.
Yeah.
From what I've. It's up to you guys. This is for us, so we can split it to maybe the four cores and the integrity. That'll take you to about page seventy-five.
Okay, so twenty.
So maybe the four cores of credibility and the care, one integrity that you congruent, and we can stop there, page seventy-five, I think.
So twenty-seven to seventy-five, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forty, because we, we should start at page forty-three, you should have.
Twenty-seven, but it's okay, it's all good. I'll write it down.
So ending at page seventy-five.
Ending at page seventy-five. And what is the timeframe?
Forty-three to seventy-five, so the timeframe is up to us. So if we want to do it by the next work session or the following after that, it's up to us.
Alba, when's our next work session?
Well, we have the sixth.
If you want me. Oh.
To the sixth.
So we saw, we don't have.
Yeah, that's the only one we have, because then we have.
That gives us the weekend.
Yeah, we have, the next one is just in December.
And we start at twelve noon, so. I mean, that's fine with me.
That gives us two weeks.
One thing I will say that I've noticed, I see lots of parallels with Fierce.
Oh.
Lots of parallels.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
No, it's not.
So November sixth, right? Talk about it.
November sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
On November sixth, we will read up to page, actually, I think it's.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yes. Yeah, page seventy-five, okay.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, item D is school board compensation. And I'll go to Mrs. Breja who has summarized some things that they discovered through their committee.
Yes, so I'm, I'm speaking as the committee chair, this is not my individual opinion. This is just as a, speaking as a committee chair who has this topic. So on the summary document that you have in front of you, there's a brief timeline giving some of the history of school board member compensation here in the city of Manassas. The last time the stipends were adjusted for school board members was in October twenty-seventeen. There was a vote to increase it then, and that's the stipend we have now and have had since, which is twelve thousand dollars a year for members and eleven hundred dollars additional per chair, thirteen thousand one hundred per chair. No eligibility for health insurance or other benefits. And then some of the other compensatory factors, you know, there's no office space, we, we don't have access to office space. We, we don't have dedicated staff members. There are some other things that are compensatory that we do not have access to. But in terms of numeric dollars, no eligibility for health insurance, other benefits, thirteen thousand one hundred per chair, twelve thousand for members, October twenty-seventeen. The adjustment, the, that was an adjustment that was made for the first time since two thousand nine. So we're looking at two thousand nine, twenty seventeen, and now.
Twenty-two.
Yes, so twenty twenty-five, we're talking about it. If any adjustment is made, it goes into effect in twenty twenty-seven. There is a statutory restriction on when we are allowed to make these adjustments. We are not able to do it when anybody is a candidate for office. So because we are on this kind of every ten year-ish kind of clock, in February twenty twenty-five, the board development committee did some market research, looked around at what other jurisdictions were doing, what the, what our jurisdiction was doing in terms of other elected officials in the city. And the committee generated a set of recommendations out of that, recommended continuing no eligibility for health insurance or other benefits, recommended increasing this chair stipend to the regional market rate of two thousand dollars over the regular member stipend. Two thousand dollars over does seem to be a pretty common adjustment that people make in the region. And the mayor has a three thousand dollar differential over the city council, so two thousand seemed by standard market rate, you know, to be a standard market rate adjustment. And then the committee recommended further discussion of the regular members stipend for the full board, which we did get a chance to do in June of twenty twenty-five at our retreat, we did discuss it briefly there. The summary out of that, which is not anything that we're held to now, we can change it now or we can stop it now if we want to. But the conclusion that came out of that discussion was to continue no eligibility for health insurance or other benefits, maintaining the recommendation of two thousand dollars as a bonus for chair, serving as chair, and then increasing the regular member stipend to twenty thousand dollars a year. However, in the analysis of how school board compensation is determined, there was wide variability regionally. You know, there are some school board members who make ninety thousand, there are some who make three thousand. But what was congruent was within the jurisdiction, city council, oh, you know, the city council, board of supervisors, county board, whatever it is, makes more than school board, some single jurisdiction where that's flip-flopped. And there is a proportionality there. You know, if you are a forty thousand dollar school board, you have a sixty thousand dollar or so county board or if you're a hundred thousand dollar board of supervisors, you are an eighty thousand dollar school board. You know, there's a proportionality within the jurisdiction in terms of how, how this compensation is determined. So in June twenty twenty-five, we had this preliminary discussion, but we are not the market leaders for elected officials in the city of Manassas. For, the market leaders for elected officials in the city of Manassas are mayor and council, and they were in the middle of doing their thing. So the conclusion out of that was maybe this, but wait and see. So we do now have the results of what that, you know, what they determined for themselves. The city council members approved a stipend increase for thirty-four thousand dollars a year for their council members and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year for mayor. City council members and mayor are eligible for health insurance, that has been that way for a long time. I do want to spend some time to make sure everybody understands what, what that differential is. The reason why the board development committee did not recommend pursuing that is that the liability, the compensation liability to the division would have been a hundred thousand dollars or more if everybody of all seven members had decided to go for the most expensive plan. And so we're talking about this dollar amount and we should still talk, the dollar amount is important. But in terms of total compensation, the school board of the city of Manassas makes magnitude less in total compensation when you factor in that health insurance via the lack of health insurance. So, and there is no interest unless someone wants to make that case today in adding the hundred thousand dollars of liability that health insurance would bring. We're talking about it now, we can all, anyone can put any idea out there. But I do want to emphasize that this is a significant saving. Forgoing health insurance is a significant saving and is unusual regionally. And then most others, yeah, most other school division make their school board members eligible for health insurance. So I did want to spend some time on that to make sure everybody understood. So our job here today is to come to a discussion and a decision whether this goes on to our regular meeting agenda. If it goes on to our regular meeting agenda, we have to decide on what compensation package is going on. There would be a first reading where, you know, we would discuss it on the dais and public comment would obviously, there's no public comment at work sessions. But if you wanted to come for public comment at the regular meeting, then that would be the opportunity to do it. And then there would be, at the next meeting in December, we would have our second reading and vote and obviously public comment available at that meeting as well. So there are two more opportunities if we decide to take this forward for us to consider it. So do we want to move forward with twenty thousand dollars a year, two thousand bonus for chair and no eligibility for health insurance or other benefits? Does anybody else, would anybody else like to make any alternative proposal? Or would we like to stop the discussion now and take this up? The next opportunity we would have to do this would be twenty twenty-seven.
Mrs. Spall?
I just want to add to your list that unlike council, we do not take a recess. We definitely have more meetings.
How long is their recess?
Hold on.
A month.
And I have a historical data sheet that I'll be happy to pass around, but the last time that council made twelve thousand dollars was two thousand two. That's when their salary jumped. So they've all but doubled their salary. I don't want to be seen as any kind of a. I don't want to be seen as any kind of a money grubber. I'd love to hear from the new people about, you know, what their, what the job is versus what they thought it was going to be. I really would like to hear that. I'll pass that along, but um, you know, I think that we're really cutting off our nose despite our face if we think that anyone who's not an existing candidate um for one of these positions is going to look at the city of Manassas and say, I want to run for something, but I'll pick the twelve thousand dollar job. And not the thirty-four thousand dollar job, I mean, I just don't see it. So maybe I'm may very, very misled, but I I think that we we're we've kind of been backed into a corner, and it's been a while since we had an adjustment.
Sarah, I haven't done the math, but percentage-wise before, where school board and council was at before, what is the
The?
Equivalent of that?
What were they before?
Well, it was six thousand dollar different differential. Right, twelve to eighteen.
No, I'm talking about city councils. They went from.
From.
From eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah, because that was the last, it was in twenty twenty-two, it was the last.
Right, that was almost double, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my math people.
My math people would, my math people laugh.
He's like, can I?
What was the question you asked?
I was asking, okay, so city council very recently was at eighteen thousand, and they went to thirty-four. We are at twelve, what is like the the difference, the correlation, be like, if we were the same as them?
We went up by the same percent.
They went up forty-seven percent. Yeah, they almost, they almost doubled.
Okay, not quite. So if we were talking about inflation, what would be um our salary if we were to just do the inflation?
I don't think that can be counted, because all the years between ten years ago, you know, and now.
Right.
It's, you can't account for all of that every year, you know what I mean?
No, I understand, I was just looking at here with the data that she had was that inflation since October twenty-seventeen was thirty, increased by thirty-two percent, so I just wondered.
So here, I can, I can give you some.
Okay.
So yes, the CPI, the consumer price product, which my uh index uh has increased by thirty-two percent since the last time it was adjusted, and I think uh so thirty-two percent would bring us to sixteen thousand. But if you are using a inflate, you know, if inflation is guiding you, the it's not just historic, yeah, every ten, this is only talked about every ten years on average. And so I think the point that is trying to be made is that you, if you shoot for straight inflation, you're underachieving the next, you know, ten years in front of that, because even by the time it goes into effect, like this has to wait a year before it goes into effect, it only goes into effect in January of twenty-seven, that sixteen thousand number would already lag, because you're going to have another year of inflation, right? So inflation is just kind of difficult to.
Yeah.
Because we don't know what it's going to be ten years from now.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I have that sheet?
Well, yes, I'm sorry.
Are you done, Michael?
Yes, you're good.
Quick question, is city council bound by that same legislation that they have to wait to twenty twenty-seven?
There's some are.
Theirs is a little different, yeah. And also theirs has to go to a hearing, ours goes straight to a vote.
Oh.
But there's a.
There's some.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's worth talking about, because as a new person, like you were asking, there are more meetings than you think, and there's also more commitment than you would imagine, like just because if you want to be a part of the community and you want to go, you're consistently trying to go to different events, and it's a time commitment um outside of that, preparing for meetings, um, you know, and making sure that you are prepared, you know, you have to do that due diligence. So I feel as though um it's been ten years, I mean, when it would go into effect, right, go into effect. Um, and I think that it's reasonable to get something, maybe not all the way to twenty, but something of a, an increase. So I'd be, I would be, um, I I agree with increasing is what I mean. Now, as far as how much, that might be something that I would want to discuss.
Something to keep in mind too is, I mean, the amount of stipend does not guarantee you a quality school board member, and all the extra things that we do, and we all do them, that is not a requirement of a school board member, your requirement is to attend the meeting. Um, now, of course, we want people like that, we want people to be involved in our schools. And supporting our students, supporting our staff, but it doesn't guarantee anything.
That's true, you're right.
Is Diana still on?
Diana, do you, do you, would you like to say anything?
Well, yes, we regardless of which way we go here, uh, we're going to make the news, because city council did experience and handle a lot of criticism when they went through with their changes. But I think these are necessary changes, um, and you're right, saying, Chair, you're right. Um, sorry, Chair, you're you're correct in saying that a lot of the stuff is what we bring um and the value that we add to the role, and but I think that in itself um needs to be highlighted, because um I don't think any of us here um is bringing less than um our very best in regards to putting out ourselves and our gifts and talents with the community. Um, and that's what we want, we want to attract and retain like really good people that understand that the basics is not good enough if we really want to make an impact on this community. But we also need to recognize um that what used to be good enough ten years ago, even five years ago, is not now, because the demands of this role have changed and continue to shift. Uh, the policymaking is becoming more difficult and more complex. So it requires a little bit more time if you don't already have the type of expertise that are needed for that. Um, and then, of course, the workload, if we want to do it right, I mean, we added this work session, case in point, where we, i- it's necessary for us to meet like this and put in um two, three, four hours just to um reconvene and talk and align um on different issues um beyond just the meetings that are already in the book. And then, you know, I I just have this thing that when we, i- it's a symbol, right? And I I know that this is good or bad, whichever way you want to take it, but when we don't um add with with inflation and we still very low, um, for example, and I'm not speaking anything bad about Manassas Park, but their city council is one of the lowest paid in the city. So a lot of people don't think that that's a good career to pursue because of the pay, and you will be spending more to fulfill the role than the stipend that you get. And so it promotes this equity imbalance where this is symbolic, like a low-paced symbolism that i- it also can exclude like people who want to do it, but it's going to cost them more to pay for daycare. I always think about Sarah when she has to pay for that extra daycare to come to her meeting. So it excludes working parents or any person that's making a livable wage um as a resident in our city, but may have a specific intent for um a gift that they want to share or view that we may, you know, value from. So I I just think that overall, we just need to um, you know, adopt this and kind of um grunt the criticism, because it's going to come either way, but it's, I, in my, in my opinion, it's necessary.
Mrs. Breja, sir, anything you wanted to say personally outside your role as a committee chair?
Um, well, so the decision that we are making today is just whether or not this goes on to the regular meeting agenda, like.
I'm going to ask for a show of hands, I just wanted to make sure that everybody has their say.
Right. And so it is.
Whether it goes forward?
Well, yeah, well, not, not right now, you can.
Not yet.
But I just, just so everyone and anybody watching is clear on what is being decided now, the vote is not until December.
Right.
So I think that.
If it moves forward from tonight.
If it, if it moves forward from tonight, the vote is not until December. Now, I think twenty thousand dollars is a little, uh, as it turns out, too much, because the forty-seven percent raise that council gave itself would be about eighteen thousand dollars.
Some people are suggesting forty thousand dollars, so, I mean.
We, we would be the only jurisdiction I'm aware of for uh to outearn the city council. If uh if that were the case, I would not recommend that person.
But it's not me.
I know, I'm not speaking as yourself, yes. So, and to go by the inflation number, that's sixteen thousand, I mean, there are costs associated with this for sure, and it's um, but it is also public service, and not any of us, there's not any of us who have to do it, right? And in my experience, uh, speaking to people who have been interested over the years in running for school board, how much does the job pay is like question number twenty-two. Right, like, question number one is usually how many meetings, what's the time commitment, what's it like running for office, things like that, and they don't even, a lot of times, people are surprised to find out it pays anything at all. So in my um experience, the money is less impactful for a candidate recruitment. If recruitment is the goal, I don't think that it impacts recruitment. Uh, does it serve to offset the costs associated, in my own personal case, a lot of babysitting? I won the OAA, the raffle, and people ask me, where is that money? Oh, what are you going to do with the raffle money that you won? It's just like, oh, there's a babysitter at home, it's going. So I don't, I don't know that I would agree to move twenty thousand dollars forward, but I am and then avoid a further discussion about any other number below that.
Mrs. Dean. So um I I have some philosophical beliefs that are deeply entrenched that serving in an elected position is a civic duty. And for as long as I've known, I have found it problematic when elected vote to give themselves large raises, but they're still making cuts to programs or they still have unfunded needs in the budget. And for me, that's a very difficult pill to swallow, because this is not a job to me, this is a duty. I was elected to perform a service, I was not elected, I did not run to get paid. I didn't know that there was any pay associated with this till like September, the year I ran. So for me, philosophically, I really can't vote in favor of a raise because of my philosophical beliefs that at higher levels, I believe personally, it's morally wrong to be giving yourself more money when you're potentially taking away from others who are needier than you are, and that's our students. And I believe very firmly that they always need to come first. And like Ms. Breja said, I've never had anybody say, well, how much does it make? Their question is, well, how many meetings, or, oh, I've seen what goes on, I don't want to have anything to do with that. And I don't think, I've never had someone ask about compensation. And people do ask a lot of questions about school board, so that's where I stand. I would be in favor of adding a thousand dollars to the additional stipend for chair, but beyond that, I'm really not interested.
Nine hundred dollars for.
Nine hundred dollars, I'm sorry. Nine hundred dollars increase in stipend for chair, but beyond that, for me, I.
Let me also add, there are some jurisdictions who pay the vice chair a bonus, which is not on the table here.
Right.
So there's a lot of things that are not on the table.
Right.
Like the hundred thousand dollars and more of health insurance is not on the table. Paying the vice chair, sorry. A bonus. Is not on the table, and in terms of a final vote, that's not really the.
Right.
You don't have to decide that tonight.
No, I know.
That's not what the discussion is, is the discussion, and I'll say, I had a, I called each of you or texted each of you uh individually to see whether this, you know, whether we should have this discussion tonight. And there is a member who's not here who wanted to hear more, uh, just wanted to hear more information from everybody. And so just to be fair and represent that perspective, she also wanted to see it continue forward. It's not a formal vote.
Yeah, it's not a formal vote, and it's the rule of the board to choose to move it forward or not.
Diana, did you have something else?
I just see you, the picture came in now, I can see you. I wasn't able to see anybody, I don't know, sorry.
All right. I will call for, may I have a show of hands, who would like to continue discuss this discussion and move it forward to a regular school board meeting?
Well, we have to, we need a number.
Oh, we need a number.
Yes.
Oh.
Not a number between one and ten.
Oh, my goodness, guys.
Twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand? Is that what you said, Diana?
Yeah, twenty thousand. And and I think we we arrive at that number, Sarah, you didn't include it in your notes, but we arrive at that number based on a seven, I think it was a five percent. Um, if we went with the five percent um um uh stipend that we gave the teachers, uh, increase that we gave the teachers, raise the five percent raise, I think that's how we arrive at that number, if we, if we were to um add five percent, I think.
For years since two thousand seventeen.
Seven percent, maybe seven percent, would take us at eighteen thousand, because we talked about that. If we did the same raise that we gave everybody, um, that was a seven percent, I think, it was, it was going to come up to about eighteen thousand. But then somebody said twenty-four, and then we landed at twenty thousand.
I think previous uh boards said that we should do like half, wasn't that, I think someone had mentioned that, that.
It was on the board when it was six thousand, and it was doubled.
Doubled, right.
So that.
That number was at that for how many years?
Yeah.
Twelve years? And then it doubled, and we've been at, it will be ten years if this moves forward for a change. So.
I don't know about the number, I'm kind of on the fence about the number. I feel like, I know as even as a teacher, you know, yes, we we give them raises, but it's definitely.
Tonight, we're just talking what we put forward, and there can be more discussion, if it voted to go forward, there can be more discussion then.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I I I just think we're pretending to you that the budget for uh for us, for governance, is a teeny, teeny, tiny fraction, so I do uh, I do value and respect your um, your views, Lisa, but when we're talking about, I think it's in, somebody up there can correct me now, but I think it's less than one percent, maybe one percent. Um, so that's what we're talking about. I, our budget is is a very tiny fraction of the overall budget, so maybe if we look at that and and get the exact number, um, maybe that 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 will give perspective as well. It's not like we take, it's not like we taking twenty percent of our whole budget to get this um um adjustment to the stipend. And it's still a stipend, it's not paid, it is a stipend. And and in my case, for example, I donate most of it anyway, so I invest it right back into the schools anyways, but it is a stipend, not they.
All right, so Diana, do you, do you want it at twenty thousand, do you want to see twenty thousand in that? Okay, and Dana, would you feel comfortable making a decision tonight if, to move it forward?
I don't feel comfortable with twenty thousand, but I do understand what um Diana said about the seven percent, because I just did the math, and that's where we came to um that um. I I feel more comfortable with the cost of living every, every year and.
You can't do it every year.
No, from the ten years, that's what I mean. So instead of doing, because it would be seven percent ti- or seven percent times ten for, it would really be like seventy percent a raise if we do the twenty thousand. But if we were to do the cost of living, which would be more of like thirty-two percent, I would feel more comfortable with that, um, because that would be giving us a cola every single year of that ten years. So that's what I would feel more comfortable with, but I am definitely want it to go forward. I'm just, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that twenty thousand.
So you're eighteen.
What is your number?
I think it, the thirty, I think it's a sixteen thousand, I just.
So inflation is sixteen thousand, the forty-seven percent market rate adjustment for local elected officials in the city of Manassas, a forty-seven percent, is at eighteen thousand, and twenty thousand was the compounded number.
Well, it would be, it would be like a thirty-eight hundred raise as opposed to a, to the seventy percent, because that, to me, I think that's just a huge jump. And and a lot of people are struggling financially, we have a shutdown, a government shutdown, where a lot of, you know, people we don't know were affected, and I think that we have to be fiscal, fiscally responsible, and I think that would be more fiscally responsible than doing. and I think that would be more fiscally responsible than doing such a big jump, but
So you're saying sixteen thousand is your
Um, I think that would be, yeah, because that would be
Not your vote, because we're not voting, but for
It would be, yeah, it would be close, around it up to sixteen thousand. But if I'm the only one who's saying that, you know, of course, I, I will concede and say that, because I do want it to go forward, but that's just my two cents.
It's only for further discussion.
Yeah. Um, but I think that we can't push it forward until we actually have a number, is what shares.
Yes, we can't.
Yeah.
We have to have something to put on the
Right, right, right. But I just think in lieu of what a lot of people are struggling, um, you know, our demographic that we serve also is struggling in other ways. Um, and so I just think we need to be mindful of that, um, you know, and just be compassionate. And to me, that's showing compassion, showing, yes, in ten years, we haven't had a raise.
For showing compassion, then why raise it at all?
Because it's just the COLA, and most, most teachers at least get the COLA, even if we don't give them that six percent, they're going to get that COLA raise, um, that at least that two, that three percent. So I was thinking that just doing a COLA raise, which is an average raise that most people get, um, would be more
I mean, we could also just
I know what raises we've given over the years.
Right, which is a lot more, and, and I, yeah, but
We could also just let the twenty twenty seven board do this.
That's true.
Which is, I would be fine to let twenty twenty seven's school board take this up.
All right, so let me ask this one thing, without putting a number on it, a show of hands who would like to see this conversation move forward? I see two hands. I see three hands. We have six members, so it wouldn't move forward.
Oh, yeah. All right, so that's it, it's too bad, it's twenty twenty seven's problem.
Happy twenty twenty seven.
Yep. All right. We will be moving into closed session, can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I'm the, the school board of the city of Manassas. Enter closed section, uh, co, closed sessions pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two dot two dash a three seven, three seven one one, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended for the following purpose, discussion of superintendent's goals for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brescher, that the school board, the city of Manassas, enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purpose, discussion of superintendent's goals for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Five.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero.